If I could have your attention, please. We will get started with the presentation and I assure you that we will have time prior to the council meeting for additional sign up for speaking if you would like. So, let's give our attention to our presenter tonight. And for those that don't know, Nathan Hamilton is our communications director and is making a presentation to the city council tonight on what we hope to be our new website and our new app that we're going to have in 2014. So, I think Nathan's plans are to make his presentation then of course he'll be open for questions.
Absolutely. Members of the city council, thank you all so much for coming in early to learn about this. I really appreciate it. It's something really important to me, to the mayor, and I'm glad you all find it important as well. The mayor, when he first set up the communications department at the first of the year, he made it very clear what his intentions for the department were. He wanted us to be the most transparent and accessible city government that we can possibly be. Now, number one, he wanted me to look for more efficient means of communications. How can we get the most and most useful information out to the most amount of people, the most efficiently, in the most efficient way possible? Well, we're trying to use new ways of using email, press releases, and social media in different ways, trying to get the message out. That's never going to be perfected, but that's okay. We're never going to stop trying. Number two, he wanted me to find new ways to listen. So, we're not just, you know, we don't just have a megaphone screaming at people saying, "Here's what we got, you know, this meeting's happening here, this is why we did this, this is how much money we're spending on this." We're looking for ways to interact with the public, making ourselves more accessible, engaging in more conversations with the public. Now, how do we do that? There's a couple ways. That brings us to our website, which the current one is 13 years old. I don't think I've heard anyone advocating to keep the current website. So many things have been piled onto it over the past years that it has become clunky, to say the least. It is just difficult to navigate around, things aren't where they should be expected to be. It uses basically old technology, old software that does not allow us to make changes very quickly. It's difficult, it's time consuming to add, remove, or just edit anything on the site. It takes a lot of man hours to do that using that old software. Because it lacks the new technologies, we are not taking advantage of the stuff that's out there. And I'm not talking about the really fancy, you know, brand new stuff that costs a million dollars. I'm talking about the stuff that comes standard with most of the websites now. We should be able to take advantage of that and we can't because the technology, the base that our website is built on is just too old to support any of that, those new items. So, eight months ago, I started getting, having conversations with people and we ended up with kind of a website vendor selection committee. I really appreciate John Barber from the police department, Kathy Stevens from information services, Jill Ponder, Joe Martin from the electric department, and Breck Maxey also from the information services. They were very helpful in wading through a lot of this. And also Alderman Debbie Ross attended every single meeting, put in countless hours, looked at every single proposal that came in, had very, very helpful suggestions, led us down the right path, and we really do appreciate that. So Alderman Ross, thank you very much. We had 15 proposals submitted to our bid. We had four finalists that we heard presentations from and we selected Civic Live. Civic Live is a Toronto, Canada company. We were all extremely impressed with them. It was a unanimous decision from the selection committee. And I want to try to answer four questions for you here tonight. And those, I'm going to start with, why did we choose them? Well, first off, the price. Obviously, we have to consider that. They were at the very low end of all those 15 proposals. I don't believe they were the least expensive, but they were within $1,000 or two of the least expensive. That total price came in at $23,800 for the initial building the website and $3,500 per year to host, maintain, and to continue the process with them. Every proposal had a hosting fee. They were at the low end of that as well. The product that they were offering had, I would, I would, they were close to offering everything that everybody else offered for that low price. Some of the other companies offered marketing services for us. They were more in tune with branding a company and gathering new customers and we just didn't need that stuff. So, we made, we decided to go with a company that did not focus on that type of marketing product. And they were extremely professional. They kind of blew us away at their presentation. They offered us everything we wanted, every question we asked, they were like, "Yes, we can do that and we'll throw that in for free." They were like, "Well, for training, that usually adds on a little bit, but if you want us to come down there to train everybody, all your departments, we will do that. We'll hop on a plane and we'll do it." So, they were very professional. They've had, they have more than 1,000 clients. They are award winning. So, we were all very comfortable with that, with this company. So, when are we going to have our website? With a little bit of padding on there, I'm going to say July 1st, 2014. It is approximately a five-month process. Different stages, envisioning, planning, developing, migrating, stabilizing, and then the deployment. I can certainly discuss any of that in much greater detail if you like on how we're going to do that. The next question is what kind of website are we going to have? The best way I can sum it up is we want a website that allows us to effectively get information to the public, provides a user-friendly way for the public to interact with us, with a design that promotes the great look and feel of North Little Rock. Our web presence should be an advertisement for North Little Rock to prospective companies coming here. It should be easy to use for residents who want to get things done. They should not have to have been in a city employee for five years to understand which webpage they need to go to on our site in order to get what they need. And the company's really going to, Civic Live's really going to help us with that in terms of mapping out the website. Now, how are we going to get there? First and foremost, every department's going to be involved. We will be having a lot of meetings and they'll be helping us map out what their department wants to do. We're going to start at the ground level, focus on what their core role is in city government, and how do we get that onto the web and provide that the best way there? Not simply by, you know, not just putting phone numbers on the web saying, "Call us if you need something." People can go to the web and get things done, is what we're going to be looking for. We're going to be rewriting the website. Think of how many words are on our current website. We're going to be reformulating, or redrafting everything. This is a ground up. We're not tossing out everything. We're keeping a lot of information, but we're going to be presenting it in a much different manner. So, that is what I have on the website. If anyone has any questions on that, I'm happy to take any questions.
I got one question.
Yes.
You say all departments will be involved. Does that include the A&amp;P Commission, the Vista Center website? Is that going to be incorporated into that?
We will certainly link to them. They have a different brand. That gets into our branding issue. We want our website to be our brand, which is our emblem, the city of North Little Rock. Advertising and promotion has a different logo, a different message. We'll certainly work with them and link will certainly be, there will certainly be links and connections there. But, so yes, they will be involved as well. That's the best way I can answer that. Yes, sir.
Will you be able to do media alerts, like for the electric department outages, street leaf pickup and that kind of stuff?
Absolutely. That's going to be an integral part of the homepage. Just to let you all know, that brings up another thing. The content management system, which is the backbone of how things change on the website, when the agenda gets posted new, when the sanitation routes change, that is an entirely new system that we're getting. The old system is out. Previously, it was email the webmaster, explain the best you could, the changes that you wanted to your website, and they would work on it and re-code it and try to get those changes to look as well as they, you know, as well as they could. The departments, it's an extremely user-friendly content management system and the department heads themselves will be able to make those changes themselves. So, and then it's going to be the communications department job to make sure all of that is staying up to date. Yes, sir.
Mr. Hamilton, when they presented this to the committee, did they bring or show a mock-up of a webpage, a homepage for us perhaps?
They did not. They gave lots of examples and they even mentioned why they didn't. Patrick O'Shea, he's the most Irish-Canadian man I've ever met, is our lead guy working with this company. And he said, he actually told me in a phone conversation once that he did not want to do that. He gave lots of examples, but the example showed how different they all were. He said, "It's up to y'all." He said, "We will give you all kinds of different options and everything and you're going to design your own site," basically by telling us how you want things mapped out. They do have plenty of examples. City of Redmond, Washington, home of Microsoft, is one of their clients. I can go real quick here. Vallejo, California, Redmond, Washington, Dryden, they sent a lot of examples. Anyone else?
I see.
Debbie.
I think our biggest challenge is getting the input and what everyone wants and that's one of the things that the council, because I know that you all deal with other city websites daily, looking at other information. And so, that's something that we're going to need your input on this, tremendous amount of input. So, anyway, I'm sure Nathan will be having meetings with everyone.
Yes. Yes, yes, I will. Yes, Ms. White.
And you know how I feel about calendars.
Absolutely. That was, Alderman Ross can attest, we did bring that up and they have, I'm proud to say, a very good one. And it's one that we'll be able to stay up to date and change and is user-friendly as well. Easy to understand is what we were looking for.
Thanks.
If no more questions on the website, I'm going to move to the public stuff, mobile app. Now, let's see here. So, the mobile app, exactly kind of what is it? What we, I'm going to explain it by saying what it's not. It is not a 311 phone system, which costs, I talked to Little Rock and we investigated that. The mayor wanted, you know, more interaction with the public and an easier way for the public to let us know when they have something that went wrong, when their garbage didn't get picked up, when there's a pothole out there. How do we make it as easy as possible for them to let us know? Even easier than picking up a phone and giving us a call because they'd have to look up the number and everything. So, it's not a 311 phone system, which the city of Little Rock spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on. You could even save a little money by having your 911 call takers, adding a few staff to that, but they have said that's a horrible idea. So, that's not the way to go. We thought about a report and repair hotline, but even that, you have a dedicated report and repair hotline with an employee, sitting there, monitoring it, going out, looking it up. Even that, you're hiring an employee, which is getting up there in close to $100,000 a year. So, we decided that we would go for public stuff, the mobile app, which incorporates what we call a constituent relationship manager, a CRM, this and a workflow system. So, public stuff has numerous cities that they work with. Philadelphia is one of the ones I've been looking at a lot, New York, Palo Alto, North Miami Beach, Florida. If you want me to visit any of these places to take a look at it, I'll be happy to. It's an app on your iPhone, your Android or your BlackBerry. You go to it and it has lots of different options, completely customizable for us. We can add things, we can take it away, we can change the icons. The one I want to focus on, the news can scroll on there as well. The one I want to focus on is this constituent relation, relationship manager. You can go in and make a request. Now, for us, if someone calls the mayor's office and I answer the phone and they're like, "My trash didn't get picked up," I can pull up the website, go into it and enter it, tell them what I'm doing, tell them they can do this if they want, but I'm happy to do it for them. And I can put in, very simply, we build these and an email, basically a work order, gets sent to the right person. So, we're not hiring any additional staff. We're changing the way that work orders are basically put in. It, a pothole. An email would get sent to Patrick Lane or whoever Patrick Lane designates as the supervisor of that. He gets a list of all the potholes that need to be filled. He can print them out, hand them out to his guys, they go out, bring them back, he checks them off as complete. Every person who entered a request gets an email back saying it has been completed, we've taken a look at it, you know, we've taken care of it. All those requests are public. Anyone who wants to know what the city's working on at any day of time, anytime, day or night, can go to the website and take a look at all the open requests, how long that request has been open, where we're working at today. It's very simple and totally customizable. It's got a mapping system. It uses Google Maps. So, we would be able to pull up a map of where everyone is complaining about things. They can do noise complaints, abandoned cars, potholes, missed garbage pickups. This type of system is what we're choosing this app for, not simply to get news out. So, the, oh, I don't have that, but another aspect of it is the data retention. The data that shows us how often we repaired potholes this year, how much more have we done it this year than past years. And it's going to take us, the communications department, it's our responsibility to make sure people start using this. So, when we get the app, we're also going to have a marketing campaign, you know, getting it out there, getting people to use it. Every time people call in, they'll be reminded, you know, "We're happy to do this for you and we're putting it in right now. Did you know you can also go and do this?" So, it'll be an education process. You know, I don't expect 100% of the people to use it the very first year, but you know, by year three or year four, maybe we've got half the city using it. And that's just some valuable information that we'll have, some valuable data and an easier process for the citizens to get in touch with us. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
What's the cost?
The cost, absolutely. The setup is, the setup is $2,000 and then a two-year agreement is $873 a month.
Any other questions? Nathan, great job. Thank you. I know this has been a year-long process for us, but we wanted to get the right product and I think we have. Nathan didn't mention we passed out a public information project. This was done by the graduating class of a master's program for public administration. This was their thesis, more or less. It's not based on exactly on what Nathan talked about. But our question to them was, what do we do? How do we do it better as far as touching the public? And this is some good reading, so I encourage you all to take it home and look at it. I asked Nathan after they made the presentation to us, did we learn anything new? And I think the answer was probably no, but we have a whole lot of information statistic-wise to back up what we thought we knew before. So, carry these home with you and spend some time with it. Nathan, thank you very much. I'm going to adjourn this presentation and we have about eight minutes. Anyone wishing to speak during the council meeting that starts at 6:30, if you want to talk on public comments section at the end, if you want to talk on a piece of legislation, Ms. Whitby over here has the list when I'm signing up. We'll start that here in about six minutes. Now, remember, we have a lot of people here tonight and so I'm going to hold true on our three-minute maximum. So, try to gather your thoughts because at three minutes, I'm going to have to ask you to stop, okay? So, let's adjourn for six minutes. Let's call a meeting to order, Ms. Whitby.
Sir, Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Vouch.
Here.
Ike.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Of course, Ms. President, sir.
Thank you. Please stand, have the invocation pledged by Alderman Taylor.
Please bow your head with me.
Please bow your head with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to be before you, for us to be before you during this wonderful and precious holiday season. Father, we thank you for your Son Jesus. We thank you for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We thank you for being able to serve on the city council for the past year, to make the decisions for the city of North Little Rock. And we ask for your blessing going forward, Lord, in the new year, to help us to make the best decisions for the city again in the year 2014. We ask these things in your name, in your Son's Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Communications, anybody want any communications pulled?
Move Accept and File 135.
Number two.
We'll pull number two. To have a motion to Accept and File 134 and 5.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number two, how do you?
Just the title.
This is a filing by the mayor's office. It's a resolution number 8230 that was adopted December of 2012 regarding documents to exchange property owned by the city for property in the downtown area of North Little Rock.
Are you talking about the individuals that are involved in it, or the company that's involved in it? Well, who is Argento Company LLC? Who is the writer of the check, or the buyer of this property?
Are you talking about the individuals that are involved in it, or the company that's involved in it?
Well, who is Argento LLC?
It is Harold Tenenbaum and his investment group.
Okay. Now, the other question on this is, this $83,000, where to hold that in reserve to make improvements to the property? That's correct. If in the future this property is sold prior to those improvements, what happens to the $83,000?
Well, we own that property now, so I don't see us selling it. I mean, it's part of our downtown master plan for the downtown square. So, but to answer your question, if we chose to sell it, I'm sure that that money would go into the general fund.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
The $83,000 would go into the general fund?
Yeah.
If we sold it before or after improvements?
Yeah, prior to the improvements.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, I don't see us selling it. I mean, we bought it for a reason, or we traded for it for a reason, so. As I think I've told you before, we will give you a spreadsheet, because we've got several property sales coming up in the next two or three months, and we're going to give you a spreadsheet that'll show you what we've sold, what my recommendation is for the money, and so on and so forth. So this is the first piece of property to fall into that category. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Okay, this is a little bit of a unique night for us, and the fact that we have so many people here. We're more than willing to listen to everyone speak, want to hear your conversation. Three minutes, max. As you can see, we have four pages worth. If someone said something that you were going to say exactly, and you think that it's okay not to say, you can stand down if you want to, so that's fine, too. What I believe I'll do is open up the floor and let you come at, if you want to come first, great, if you want to be the fifth one, instead of calling your name. Now, I will rotate. This particular legislation is 013-115, which is the special use on Arlington. So I'm going to open up the public comments section for 013-115. Anyone wanting to speak in favor of that, please come to the microphone. Remember, you have three minutes. Yes, sir. We have someone volunteering to go first.
Mayor, before we start in, could we have a show of those standing who are both in favor of this and opposed to it?
All right, all those that are here tonight to speak in
Favor?
In favor of 013-115, please stand up. Okay? All right, and all those that are opposed to the special use, please stand up. Opposed to it, okay? Okay, let's go. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council for the opportunity to be here and present this to you, especially Mayor Smith for bringing this forward to you on consideration. My name's Steve Giles. I'm representing Mr. Butler in this zoning application, and we want to emphasize the land use considerations that are the merits of the application here. This is a very low-intensity use, lower than many homes in this neighborhood already. He has agreed to limit and condition his request so that you can be assured that there's enforceability that if it's violated, you can take some action against it through the city attorney's office, planning office, whatever. We don't want to get there, we just want to show you that this is a residence for three disabled individuals and a caretaker. That's all it will be. We said at the planning commission meeting, but Mayor, I don't think it got into the draft of the ordinance that you all have in front of you, that Mr. Butler didn't want to have to rezone his property, he was just asking for whatever permit you required to have this use. And if the zoning is approved to R1, he would be just fine that if it's never used for this purpose anymore, that it would revert to the R2. And I know the neighbors have had a lot of concern about setting a precedent. But all we're asking you to do is to hear the merits of the application and the speakers. I'm going to defer, I'll get three minutes.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to leave most of it to Mr. Butler, because he wants to speak. Seems like we're hung up on this being a for-profit business. That's the definition in your family. We're just asking you to look at it as a good residential use, very low impact, very low traffic. We have a traffic study we presented tonight, that this use will be way below the national average for single-family residential trip generation. That's 10 trips per day is the national average. Mr. Butler's use will have five average, maybe six occasionally. Also, we're asking you to think of this as a good use, and maybe waive the not-for-profit portion of your family definition, or at least overlook it, because there are other businesses going on in R1, and he's going to be much less impacted, or not nearly, maybe the same. So we're asking for a vote to rezone and the special use permit. Can I have a few minutes to wrap up after everybody?
Well, I mean, you're already done your three minutes, Steve.
Got it. I won't be able to speak after.
No, sir.
Got it. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, let's go on the other side right this second. Those, someone wanting to speak against this ordinance, please come forward. Ken?
Evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm Ken Sullivan. I'm the executive director of Lakewood Property Owners Association, and work with Lakewood Recreational Improvement District Number Four. And what they're wanting to do certainly sounds like a good cause, but we spend a lot of money each year to maintain properties, to make sure that we are improving, or hopefully at least maintaining the property values of our homes in the area. We certainly would be opposed to rezoning a home there on Arlington, which is residential, for a business use. We would just strongly oppose that, would hope that you would support us in that endeavor. Our improvement district is made up of just under 3,000 people, and of course, I hadn't talked to all of them, but I know that a majority, or not a majority, but a lot of them certainly feel the same way. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, Ken. Okay. For the legislation. Yes, sir.
I had a brief PowerPoint presentation, I was wanting to see if I could
Please pull it up, you've got three minutes. Do you want to spend your three minutes watching pictures, or?
Nathan said he had it. Thank you, Nathan.
Okay.
First off, Merry Christmas. Thank you for coming here. You know, what I really want to do is, I've been fortunate enough to work with the greatest generation for 20 years, and I want to take care of the greatest generation and their offsprings. And I want to do it in a place like they've been used to living, in a home, in a home environment, in a neighborhood. That is what I want to do. And I didn't just jump out there and decide to do this. I called Mayor and I asked to see if I could do this. And when I was given permission to be able to do this, I received a letter from Mr. Boles stating that I could do that. And then I got contractually obligated to the property. After I became contractually obligated to the property, the city sent me another email stating that they would rescind their previous decision. By that time, I was obligated, I went forward and moved with the project. And the primary reason I went moving with the project is because these disabled individuals, they deserve to be able to live in a home. They deserve to be able to live in an R1 facility, R1 home. This is a home, it is a residence. It is very secondary that it's a business. The point here is that people deserve not to have to live in institutions, not to have to live at home by themselves, being depressed, being lonely, not being cared for at all. The Fair Housing Act, as a general rule, the Fair Housing Act makes it unlawful to refuse to make reasonable accommodations to rules, policies, practices, or services when such accommodations may be necessary to afford a person with disability an equal opportunity to use or enjoy a dwelling. Also, what is reasonable? What is reasonable in one circumstance may not be reasonable in another. For example, suppose a local government does not allow groups of four, I'm sorry. Not all requested modifications or rules or policies are reasonable. Whether a particular accommodation is reasonable depends on the Fair Act, and must be decided on by a case-by-case basis. The determination of what is reasonable depends on the answers to two questions. First, does the request impose, the request imposes an undue burden or expense on the local government? I think that's a no, I'm not asking you to spend any money. Does the proposed use create a fundamental alteration in the zoning scheme of the neighborhood? Again, it is no. If the answers to these questions are no, the requested accommodation is reasonable. If it is, I'm hearing conflict about reasons for people to be here, that you don't want this to open. I hear that it's going to open up the floodgates. And if the floodgates means that our greatest generation, and their offsprings, and people that are in this very room that are growing older every day, not be able to live in a safe, warm environment, and being taken care of in a manner that they like to be, then I say, let the floodgates open. Let the disabled people be able to have a place to be, instead of in an institution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, against?
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
When they come to the podium, would you ask them to please give us their address?
Yeah, if you will, identify yourself
Name and address, I'm sorry.
And say where you live. The gentleman that just spoke was Mr. Butler.
Good evening. I'm Mark Rubel, and I represent Lakewood Recreational Improvement District, I'm on the board there, one of the board members. And in our last meeting, we actually discussed this, voted it, and as an improvement district, we voted not to allow this to happen in our neighborhood. Our concern is that, once we started, that it does open up to other areas, and we don't, our responsibilities are to actually improve properties. That's our primary focus. And if we keep the properties up, that keeps our values up. We do not want to see multifamily dwellings in our area. We want to keep them single-family. We have disabled members, families in our neighborhood, and we welcome them. We do everything we can to make sure that we set up projects and things for those people to do. We try to hit every age group that we can. So, from Lakewood Recreational Improvement District, I thank you for your time, and I urge you not to allow this to happen, to start devaluing our properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, we're going those that are for, someone want to speak for this? Yes, sir.
Mayor Smith, Councilman. My name's Jim Smetley, I live on 1129 Diamond Head. I spoke with Steve the other night, actually.
29 Diamond Head?
Drive in
North Little Rock?
Yes, sir. I've been here seven years now. I don't consider myself necessarily invested in this interest, but there's a couple of reasons I wanted to speak tonight. Number one, I'm one of those individuals that has a dad that's reaching of age, that has Parkinson's disease, is getting advanced. And this is the direction, I think, that we need to be looking to move to. I have a friend recently committed his mom, I said committed, because that's what it is, committed to a nursing home, and he said it was the hardest, bitching thing he ever did in his life. And to me, having seen my grandmother go through the situation too, I would like to find a place for my dad, and it comes to the point in time where my mom can't take care of him anymore, to be able to put him into a place like this. And I think with the baby generation coming down upon us, which we all know it's coming, we hear it day in and day out, this is inevitable, it's going to happen. Now, I can understand depreciating values, my home's depreciated over there where I live. But what I fear is, you know, look at this from a disability act or in violation with the Fair Housing Act, or whatever, could create a problem that I don't think the city probably wants to tackle. I don't feel like they would want to, because I've also heard rumors that there's a federal investigation possibly taking place already, and I just don't see us getting into litigation. My house has been broken into twice. I'd rather see money spent on things like police enforcement, roads, litter down my road. There's other things that I think we need to be focused on rather than something like this. I would welcome, I would welcome a house like this in my neighborhood. And the reason why is because some of my neighborhoods have two and three families already living in them already. Some of those are the very people that probably broke my house. So I'm not speaking necessarily for HO3, but I'm speaking for this type of concept, this type of thing, because I think it's inevitable, I think it's going to happen, and I don't see any other way around it. Like I said, I would love to have them in my neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you. One comment, there was a little misleading in a federal investigation. There's no federal investigation, there is a Mr. Butler filed a fair housing complaint. So with that, someone against it? Against it?
I'm Steve Moss, 4409 Randolph. I live directly behind the house question, and I'd like for y'all to vote against this. It's pretty cut and dry. It is a business, and if you want to stop operating in R1, you can't do that. And R2 allows other occupancies to, there's churches, community centers, parking lots. So if you start doing R2, you're opening up the property that sells to other occupancies in that area. And as 33 years as an architect, I've never seen an occupancy revert back to its original intended use. From R2 back to an R1, it will probably never happen. So let's don't set a precedent in Lakewood Village. Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Councilman. I can speak with direct experience with what's going on with the ordinance. I am the daughter of a patient. My mother is a patient at the House of Three in Little Rock that Mr. Butler owns and operates. My mom is in her fourth year of suffering with vascular dementia. And we've watched my mom go from a very vibrant, passionate, full-of-life lady to being totally incapacitated, doesn't know us. And I have, we have taken her through the channels of other places of care. We've been in a nursing home situation. We've been in two different rehabs. We've been in a hospice facility. And all of those other places, I have witnessed my mom not being cared for like she should be. We've watched neglect. And when we found out that this was a model, of course, I've known the Butler family for 30 years, and I know what their family stands for and their children stand for. And I've known them as outstanding, model Christian citizens in servanthood. And I know that Coy's very experienced with elder care. And so, when we found out that there was an opening there, we immediately put my mom there. And my mom has had the best care. We can finally rest at night knowing that my mom is properly cared for, daily bathed, fed, home-cooked meals. She is prayed for and with daily. It's a family environment. There's no parking issues. When you drive up to the House of Three, it looks like any of our homes. Mr. Butler went in, and it's a beautiful home. It looks just like any other residential home. There are flowers planted, shrubs planted. He added so much decor to the outside of the home. It's landscaped beautifully. The inside of the home is handicapped accessible. That's the only difference in any of our homes and that home. My mom is in a hospital bed instead of a regular bed, but that's because of her condition. The caregivers love their work. They love my mom. They love the patients. There's no delivery trucks. Family helps out with getting groceries and bringing those back. So, I realize residents are concerned about what it's going to look like or what it's going to be. It will not devalue the property at all. If anything, it will enhance the property value of that home, because Coy stands very high, and he would not allow that home to be run down.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we ask a question of the-
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Is there a charge for your mom?
Yes. It's a private pay because of mom and dad savings. My mom was not at a point. And we were private paying at the nursing home as well.
So, do you pay a daddy rate or a monthly rate?
Monthly.
Monthly rate. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Thank you. Against? Someone wishes to speak against? Could I just go ahead? Excuse me, just go
With this type of home, rather than having each patient or each person who live in the home pays a standard rate, correct, which may be $500 or $800 per person, correct? It's not like I'm going to rent a house out, because I'm trying to distinguish between business and residence.
It's a business.
It's a business, in my opinion, because they're not renting their house out for $500, $800 a month. They're charging, and I think it's hard, but you're charging each individual who lives in that house a rate, which may be anywhere from $5,000 or $1,000 per month or more than that. So, he may be pulling in $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 a month. To me, and I just want to save y'all some time, to me, that's a business.
Thank you. Yes, sir. This is against this legislation?
Yes. Good afternoon, Council. Evening, Council. Mayor. My name is Justin Mock. I live at 4411 Arlington Drive, just a couple of houses down from the property under debate right now. I would like to echo the concern against the rezoning of the property. My wife and my daughters moved into that property we currently live in about three years ago. We chose this neighborhood explicitly because it was exactly that, a neighborhood. There were no businesses mixed in with it. We thought that the schools, the neighborhood, the community were exactly what we were looking for. And I think that if you start mixing in business into that community, regardless of how well-intentioned business may be, it is the complete opposite of what we were looking for. And I truly feel bad for Mr. Butler and Business for investing anything that may have invested to this point. But there are any number of properties in Little Rock. The entire Park Hill community is already zoned exactly the way that he wants to be zoned, and I think that it's doing a disservice to us as taxpayers and homeowners in that community to consider this rezoning because of potential rezoning efforts in the future. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, for?
I'm Kara Coulter. My husband and I live at 6109 North Hills Boulevard in North Little Rock. Currently, we are renting that home until we can build our own home. McClanahan Realty, is it McClanahan, rents that property to us. They make a tiny fee every month that they subtract from what we pay that they give to the actual homeowner. So, they are making money on the rent that I pay them. Originally, when Coy petitioned the city for to purchase this house, before he purchased this house, the city did tell him it was fine to do that, for the use of this property. After he was already committed, then they rescinded that. And I think it would be a shame for a city in North Little Rock to say, no, we don't want something like this in our community, when this is exactly...I don't see the difference in what I'm doing in renting my house and paying McClanahan Realty a fee and what Coy is doing. It's a business. What is the difference? And I think he has less people going to be living in his house than what y'all allow for a single-family usage. And there's nothing that's going on in that house that would constitute a quote "business," because I give care to whoever I have, to my husband, or he gives care to me. What's the difference?
Thank you. Okay, saying then go back to any others. Want to speak for this?
Against.
Are you for or against? Okay, go.
My name is Debbie Barker. I live at 2004 Mill Creek Circle in North Little Rock. My husband has lived in North Little Rock since he was a small child. We have lived together in North Little Rock for over 30 years. I would like to plea from the lower end of the age group. I have a daughter that's 15 with Down Syndrome. She will someday, I hope, be independent enough to live somewhat on her own, but always need assistance for safety and health reasons. And it would be wonderful to have her live in a neighborhood with her friends and family. She has grown up in North Little Rock. She has gone to North Little Rock Public Schools, mainstreamed in the public schools, and she has friends and family in this area. And to have her in a home close by us, but for her to be independent in that home would be the best thing for her. And if you don't allow, like a special use or whatever you need to, for a home like this, she will never be able to live in the area that we live in. So, I would like for you to consider that however you can as far as a special use. I understand from the neighbor's standpoint that they don't want it rezoned, but if there's anything you can do to make this available to those who need the service, I would appreciate it, because my daughter is soon approaching that age. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Jackson, and I'm at 4408 Arlington. That's right next door. Within the one block of, say, 16 homes between Fairway and McCain, on that one block, within that block, there are two businesses, people who live there and operate not outwardly, but within that area, two businesses, three rentals, two families with very young homes, five individuals who have somewhat handicapping conditions, three who have multifamilies living within homes there. That's a lot of diversity within one block. Within the greater 3,000 families in Lakewood, there are approximately 200 people who have some type of business license within that address of Lakewood. That's a lot of addresses with businesses attached to them. That makes me wonder, what's wrong with this? Across the street, there are young ladies who are living in that house that are not, and they're wonderful children. I say that. They're college age, grad school. They're paying the owner rent. That's a business, The opposite end of our street is Lakewood Nursing Home. Guys, it's not on our block. It's the opposite end of our street. I'm not counting that, but it's just kind of ironic here. The past year and a half, I'll change the subject, I'm sorry, the last year and a half has taught me a lot of compassion that I never needed to have. Our son, who grew up in our house, very possibly will need a house next door that doesn't look like a nursing home at all. It's three master bedrooms upstairs. If a person went to buy that house and had two daughters, he'd be in hog heaven, because they'd have their own bathroom upstairs. It has a living room, dining room, a den, a deck on the back, and three master bedrooms upstairs. They'd be in heaven. But our son is in final stage ALS, and he could be next door, and I would be very happy, because I could take care of him a lot easier there than I could at the other end of the street at the Lakewood Nursing Home. Thanks, guys. Think about it.
Thanks, Debbie.
Sure. Question?
Mr. Fauch?
I'd like to address the previous speaker.
Sure.
You don't have to get up and do anything. That's fine. My other job is, I work for Pathfinder, and I'm sure with your daughter, you're aware of that. We have many types of residential facilities in a variety of neighborhood settings all across the state. And whenever we are going to move into a facility, or we're looking at moving into a facility, the first thing we do is we go to the stakeholders in the neighborhood, that's the property owners associations and all of those, and ask, we're coming, we would like to move in. Is it okay with you? So, before we make the move to that location, we're already assured that we're going to be welcome in the neighborhood. Now, it's a pretty big split here. That's something that we do routinely, regularly, because we have hundreds and hundreds of folks who live in residential facilities with a vast spectrum of disabilities. Many of them home-cared, many of them in tech facilities, many of them in their own apartment residential facilities. But each and every location, before we go in there, we've talked to the stakeholders and got their agreement that we would be a fit for their neighborhood prior to our moving in. That's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other comments on this legislation? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Krista Hughes, and I live at 2512 Hickory Nut Court in Little Rock. I'm actually here this evening to represent the Arkansas Division of Aging and Adult Services within the Department of Human Services. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. What I wanted to start with is just that I support this. My division supports this request. We have tens of thousands of people in Arkansas that need long-term care, and that can be anything from very low level of assistance to more significant care levels. I supervise home and community-based programming. We have over 10,000 that we serve in Medicaid alone in homes, well over 600 in these neighborhoods that we're talking about in terms of North Little Rock. And that's just a fraction. I mean, that's just the tip of the iceberg. There's so much more is paid through private pay than to the payors. So, the demand and just the growing, as we all know, aging of the demographics, it's just going to be more and more profound. So, I guess I just wanted to say that we all want to live at home. We want to age in place and within our communities. In order to be able to do that, we have to be able to have homes within those communities that will accommodate that. AARP conducted a study in 2005. Not surprisingly, 75% of those asked, wanted to remain at home. The problem is that oftentimes, there are not suitable homes. Arkansas has just an inadequate supply, a state of afford homes to go into. About 20% of our state's nursing home population is estimated can live in a less restrictive setting. That is the preferred choice, okay, to be in your homes. That can, in times past, these tens of thousands of people that need care would have no choice, and it would be an institutional setting for them, period. Our society is just demanding innovation and personalization of our approaches to long-term care. And I just want to encourage you and encourage the Neighborhood Association to embrace this as an age-in-place phenomenon. In the state of Arkansas, I mean, not in the state of Arkansas, in the country, there's about 40 states that are operating successful adult family home models of care. The VA model is a national model, and they already make it in Arkansas. Arkansas, within this model, is in its infancy, but within our division and our department, we have identified adult family home as a preferred and very viable option for the future of our state. And we are dedicating resources to try to figure out a way to make it, to make it work. And again, I just want to encourage everybody that this is a proactive step to embrace the preference of all of our citizens here. By state law, adult family homes are not allowed to have more than three individuals living there, unrelated individuals. When you hit that magic number of four, it turns into a whole other ballgame. It's a long-term care facility in the state of Arkansas, regulated by the Office of Long-Term Care. It has huge regulatory physical structure requirements and just a whole lot to it. But this is below that. It is intentionally designed to be a residential preference, to look like, and every other home in the neighborhood, and for those who are living there, to be living like any other person in a private residence. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Robert, could you come up? Alderman Robinson would like to ask you a question.
Robert, I realize that in R1, there are certain businesses and certain things that we do not allow. But this particular place, is it considered, according to our standards, a group home, or what is it considered?
Well, that's what we're here to decide. This is a unique type of thing that's come before the city. Our zoning ordinance allows 500 related individuals to live in a home, but it's designed for a nonprofit unit. So, people gathering and living together, you know, more and more people are not getting married, but people living together are as legal, as long as the density stays low. The difference here is, this one is claimed by the operator as a for-profit type business.
It's a profit.
But the question is, you know, is this something that we should allow as residents?
Let me ask you something else, Robert. What zoning could this particular residence occur, what's going to be in the R2, R3, where?
Well, we could approve it through a special use permit, or we could identify it as a permitted activity added to zoning ordinance, or you would treat it under a convalescent, probably convalescent home is the closest definition, for-profit residence where limited medical and other services are provided. It's what we currently have, but, you know, we don't have that much clear definition in our zoning ordinance.
What's zoning in a convalescent home?
Can I get the book?
Sure you can. Question, right, Mr. Robinson?
I think R4.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of Robert while we're getting up? Mr. Taylor?
So, help me out here, Mr. Boils. The current zoning is R1.
Yes.
This use isn't permitted in R1.
That's correct.
According to- But if we did a special use, it would be permitted.
Right. And to do a special use, you have to rezonate to R2.
Okay. So, if the owner, Mr. Butler, just would have just moved three residents in his house, these three people, whoever, or four people, just moved them in and not said anything to the city, what?
Well, if he changed his business plan to a nonprofit status-
No, no.
-it's fine.
If me, Maurice Taylor, if I just say, you know what, I'm going to move my dad and Debbie's dad and Lynn's dad all in this one house, could I do that?
You could do that.
No, I don't like that.
But he was asking for a business license to operate that address, and we couldn't issue the business license without this process.
So, the reason why is because, the reason for all of this is because he is operating a business.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, it's a fine line. It's close to the line, but the for-profit is what trips it. Thank you, Robert. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Weatherford. I'm a retired professor from UAMS, and I support this concept a great deal, having spent most of my practice working with geriatric patients and recognized the need for this. And I'd like to address the gentleman's comments just then. Behind the house, I live on Pope, and behind the house, there's a plumber that operates out there with a fleet of trucks. And I'm sure he did not come to the city and ask, we should do that. On the internet, though, and call him up. He gives his home address and his business address. So, I really do think that we need to consider all this. If you're going to stop all businesses in R1, I'm for you, but you've got to stop them all. And when a man comes in and asks you to get permission to do it, and then you change, suddenly, we're, I'm not quite sure, what do you have to do? So, I don't know. But I have been to the House of Three in R1. I just finished writing. I was going to write an article for the Gazette. I think I'm going to publish it, but I did some research, and I echo a number of the comments earlier. You wouldn't know that in fact, anything other than a residential. And they're in a neighborhood. The whole point is, it's in a neighborhood. That's the point of these houses, is that they are in a neighborhood, so people are not institutionalized in a warehouse. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't get his address. Where does he live?
4005 North Rock. Four.
You want to speak?
Ask a question?
No, sorry.
Yes, sir.
4005 Mount Vernon, North Rock, and a Payne LPLA member, I've been for, I think, five years now. So, we've kind of talked about there are for-profits in R1, which caused some issues. I know personally, Mr. Butler's not an issue- Not quite sure what that compromise is yet, but we ought to be able to get there. There's a question about the business aspect, yes. Mr. Butler, tell you how three is a business. They're in the business of providing housing. They're disabled individuals, that's what they do. So I have five kids, 10 to 16. My biggest concern with having these houses close by is that we'd keep them up all night. So they might not be happy about living next to us. I'm not sure how that would work out. I appreciate your time tonight, and I hope you make the right decision on this.
Thank you.
R1 to R2 is a downgrade, isn't it?
Any others? Yes, sir.
109 North Hills Boulevard. I just want to make two points. A lot of good points have been made concerning Mr. Butler's, possibly what he's wanting to do, but my wife made a point earlier that I want to reiterate, because I don't, just to make sure that this is clear. So I was talking about making sure that this was a business, which he's obviously saying is a business, just like the previous gentleman said. But just to give you an example of how there's businesses going on right now in R1, I, my wife and I lease our property, 109 North Hill Boulevard, from Callahan, they have over 200 properties in that area there. And if I'm paying money to Callahan, and there's a gentleman who owns the home who's getting profits from this. Now, the concern for my, so for my instinct, I think there's obviously some for-profit going on here in these R1s. But my point would be, if my wife has a stroke, and I have to have a nurse come in, would you allow me to have that nurse come in and take care of her? I mean, this is a situation that could be similar. That nurse may be for profit. She may take care of my wife in that residence, that R1. I guess really the point I'm trying to make is, it's a dynamic society right now. We've got the baby boomers are turning in droves, and this is a fantastic opportunity to help those people and for the property owners. My other point was, for the property owners in that area, I assure you, here's the one individual, that his property has to be nice. If you see that first picture up there of House of Three in Little Rock with all the drains in front, he doesn't put up that up there because he likes ops, he puts it up there because he wants to make it attractive, not just for his fellow residents in the area, but for possible clients.
Sir, please speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. If his business or if his residence does not look articulate, well-cared-for, professional, as all the other residents in the area want to keep their homes, then he's going to buy this. So of that thing, I don't think we worry all about property values, because he's going to do nothing but make it better. That's the point I want to make. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others? Yes, sir.
4417 Greenway, North Rock. This is a unique situation with Mr. Butler. My father has Alzheimer's, has dementia. We had to place him in a home, and the home that we placed him in, we did our research. It is a nice home, but it's a nursing home. You're talking about being institutionalized. Whenever you're there with 50, 60, 70 other patients, you do not get the one-on-one care to win at Mr. Butler's facility. I know firsthand because my dad's there. I go there often to check on him. I wish I could get him into Mr. Butler's facility, but I needed the facility, they were full. I've talked to Mr. Butler, you know, about placing my father in a facility. He goes, Jeff, if I had a room, you know, I would love to have your father. I am an LPLA member, have been for years. I love living in Lakewood, despite it growing up because I've lived in Levy, but it was always reservations about Lakewood. I told myself I would not live in Lakewood growing up, because that was Northeast territory. I love Lakewood now. I raised my family, my two boys. I go to church here. I would love to have a facility like this where I can take my father. Father, that's a veteran who served his country, but I have to put him in an institution that has other people there that, it's just not pleasant. And with a person with dementia, it's a facility to where change is bad. When you have new people coming in all the time, change is bad for someone with Alzheimer's. They like to have consistency. In a place, a facility like this, in a homestyle environment, those people thrive. I have seen it because I have done my research on facilities like this. Just the facilities at the time have all been full for me. That's the reason why he's still in nursing home now. But when room comes available, this is the first place I'm going to go. And I'll tell you what, if you do have family members that you do have to put in a facility, please pray that it's facilities like the ones that Brother Butler is, has. Because if it's not, you're going to regret it. The person that is in that facility is going to regret it. And it's just from the heart, it's a place that you really want to go. I checked out facilities in Little Rock. I checked out other facilities. It's not like a business with a sign out front. There is not arrows pointing, this is what this business is. It's a neighborhood, it's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Butler still here?
Yes.
I'd like to ask him a couple of questions.
Mr. Butler, how many facilities do you own? One.
Just one? And 4404 Arlington, are you currently under contract to purchase? Have you closed or status that?
Yeah, after I got the approval from the city initially, I went ahead and made an offer and contractually obligated to purchase them.
And closed?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments in the audience? Mr. Robinson?
I just have a question for Robert.
Robert?
Robert, currently 4404 Arlington is an R1, and the request is to change it to an R2.
R2 is better.
So that's a downgrade, correct?
Yes, we would consider that a downgrade.
So if it goes to an R2, because I heard the people from Lakewood mentioned that it would do something, it would reduce their property values, and that's not because of the folks in the home, but because of the down zone, right? Rezoning from R1 to an R2?
Well, you can't really, you can't really put in R2, a single family, it really depends on what happens and the impacts of the change, but probably wouldn't happen significantly. We do have a list of the uses that was prepared, Mr. Robinson, for R1, R2, if you want to share that with us.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert. All right, I'm going to close this section of the public comment, and it's my intentions, unless there's some objections, to go ahead and call this legislation. Let me tell you, I know there's some, I know there are people here that want to speak on 013-117. Fellas, I know I see you out there, we'll get through this legislation, and then we'll come back. We'll take a three-minute recess and then come back. So without objection, I'm going to call that legislation, 013-117.
Yes, sir. An ordinance reclassifying property located at 4404 Arlington, the city of North Rock, from R1, R2, granting special use to allow three disabled persons and a caregiver and residence, third reading.
Let's spend rules and places on a second reading.
Second. Discussion on motion.
Ross, yes, White, yes, Taylor, Robinson, Vouch, and Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance reclassifying property located at 4404 Arlington, from R1, R2, granting special use to allow three disabled persons and a caregiver and residence, third reading.
Let's spend rules and places on a third reading.
Second.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
An ordinance reclassifying property located at 4404 Arlington, from R1 to R2, granting special use to allow three disabled persons and a caregiver and residence, third reading.
Do we have a motion? It's all move. Second. Second. Discussion, Mr. Robinson.
I just want to say, I, and I, I'm sure your phone's tapped, your phone's been off, you know, for the past several days, and emails concerning this. And I know that so many of you are here because of the holidays. The individuals within the neighborhood, which unanimously, they did not want to see the property rezoned. You know, that was just, I mean, they're adamant about it. I understand that, and the question was, would you want property rezoned to R2? And my answer is, no, I would not want my property rezoned next to me. And it's not that Mr. Butler's not doing a wonderful job, it's not that it's not a wonderful service. It's been three years, four years, five years, Mr. Butler's no longer in the service, he retires. That property is still going to remain in R2, and that is a huge concern for the neighborhood is what's going to happen in the long? It will still be in R2, and like Mr. Moss said, you can't, I mean, I don't think I've ever seen anything rezoned that, I mean, or that, if anybody on this council has. So, I mean, I know Ms. Jackson's here in the neighborhood, but it was just unanimous, everyone that had called me was absolutely against rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, Mr. Dallas Ford is in my office, a proposed amendment to this, in which it states that should this residence, ever since it was used, the residence described in Section 2, that is a house of three, that it would automatically revert back to an R1, single-family residential classification. And he sent that to me in an effort to try to address some of the fears, some of the concerns, and Mr. Ross just tried. And I just bring that up as, in case the council would be willing to entertain that amendment to the ordinance that is now written.
Mr. White?
For me, there's almost two things going on here. We've had some amazing testimonies from people supporting this concept of living for folks who need special care, and no one, I don't think anyone in this room could fault, it's an amazing concept. But the issue before us is the rezone, and I think that's still what stands for me is, you know, we're being asked to rezon the neighborhood, and the residents that I've heard from, the majority of them indicated that they did not want to rezon because of the impact of the neighborhood and the fact that the stability of the neighborhood is going to be affected. That's how they see it. And so, though I want to commend those who spoke in favor of this legislation, it certainly makes me think, as I have an aging mother and other people, I have handicapped people in my own home, in my own family, that have been in special situations. So I can see the merit of this, but this neighborhood and this community has asked to not have a rezon, so that's what I'll be standing with.
Any other comments?
Mr. Boyle, you don't have to get up to answer this question. A special use, once Mr. Butler sells his property, or disposes of the property, then the special use goes away, correct?
But it didn't revert back.
But the special use goes away. If the R2 does not.
But the R2 doesn't.
Okay. Mr. Boyle, come to the microphone.
There's a whole bunch of Mr. Bowles here tonight, right?
Yeah, exactly, I'm going to that one.
Okay, go.
If Mr. Butler sells his property, or disposes of the property, or whatever, I'm well-versed in what happened on R2 and all of that stuff, okay? The special use goes away.
Correct.
Thank you.
You said if he sells the property, but what if he sells the business?
Two different things.
If he sells the business, so somebody else becomes the business owner.
If it was made out to the business name, he could sell the business name.
And he could continue if it's made out to the business name.
Under special use, you can attach a condition. One of the conditions could be they revert back if this cease-storess exists.
I think we need to attach some conditions.
Any more comments?
I just, I have to ask Mr. Butler our question.
Sure.
You're providing, I'm assuming you're providing Medicare, sort of Medicare, Medicare services primarily, or do you?
I'm not providing Medicare services or skilled nursing services.
Are you bringing someone in that's providing Medicare?
Medical.
If a person just like it would be at home, if you were to fall, you would call ABC Home Health, they would come in and provide whatever care you needed.
Who would they bill at that point?
They would bill Medicare, yeah, the person's Medicare.
You're not a mailman on any of this.
No, not interested in that. I did not, R2 is not something I want. I mean, R1 would be a fine accommodation for me. Letting me be an occupational home business would be fine with me. The business license in R2 zones was what I was told by the city that I had to request in order to get this off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is a really tough one for me. You know, I have known Ms. Jackson for a long, long time, and I know the situation with her son. My wife and I have supported their ministry, and I've visited with him at length and checked into his home. I have a wife who's, you know, I think we all reached the point, you should be able, or you deserve to be able, to choose the way that you live. And some people can, in fact, have provided nice things to care for their elderly years, and they'll be comfortable. To be quite frankly, while I am not for changing this R2, I probably would not have any issues with it being a special use that would go with the property itself.
I don't, I don't think that's possible. In order to have a special use, you have to go to an R2. Correct, council?
Well, this council can do what it wants, it can create a zoning ordinance, and it can choose to allow this property in R1 if it wants to, and basically waive the requirement of R1, and allow, waive the enforcement of the R1 prohibition against, if it wants to do that, it can go ahead and issue a special. But that's basically making the zoning ordinance regard this property.
If I can, and I guess, the issue that I have with that is, if we do it in this instance, the next person that comes along that wants to do something that requires R2, or if it really did it there, and that's, you know, that's the question we're taking, that's what I'm struggling with.
All right, any other comments, Ms. Ross?
Well, I'm just curious, and it may not be any of my business, I'm just curious, you know, as far as nursing homes and the cost of these homes, how does that compare? What is the cost to this? Because I know there's a lot of us that would love to have these, but I don't know, I'm just curious.
Sure. You know, if you were to decide that your husband or your mother needed 24-hour caregiving, you're going to be hard-pressed to find somebody to care for them 24 hours a day, 30 days a month, for less than $12 an hour. You're going to be spending about $9,000 for that, above the cost of heating, cooking home, food, you know, all those things that go into maintaining a home. If you go into a nursing home, you're going to want a private room, you're going to be spending somewhere between $6,000 and $8,000 in Little Rock for a home. If you go in Little Rock, you're going to be paying up to $15,000. What I'm able to do is I'm able to kind of get those costs together and divide them on three, so the price is about $5,000 a month, which is a lot cheaper than any other private alternative that you're going to have.
Any comments, questions? Ms. Ross?
I have one other thing too, you know, we're talking about, is this a business? It's not a business, not a people that say that there's businesses in the neighborhood. And this, Mr. Boyle, you help me out here, but this does not meet the guideline of a home business, is that correct? I'm excited, you know, we're very specific on home businesses, what you, you know, how much you can do, how much you can give to the house. So it does not meet the definition of a home business, is that correct? Okay.
Any comments, Mr. Fauch?
I noticed I can't remember the lady's name, I made a statement from the state agency. Keeping this at three persons keeps it at a level where it does not require licensure, does not require HUD certification, or any other follow-up that any other normal residential facility would require, is that correct?
I can't speak to that, I can't speak to a long-term care facility for purposes of long-term care, institutional care, for a magic number to get the state involved with regard to the office of long-term care licensure, and it's demarked for much residential care from institutional model care. So I cannot speak to HUD. Now, the state has a certification program for adult family home, and we, of course, through Medicaid, look to offer affordable type of care services for people who are at lower income levels. So we do, if you want to receive medical funding through private pay, you do not. And I will just say that the standards, and I commend you all for taking this very seriously
and looking at the intentions and all. But all, all these providers, you know, or any of them, or, you know, Mr. Butler, should have standards in place. And I encourage you to look at that. My state has got this property in the Little Rock area, we have, you know, looked through its manuals. And I would just say that, that's what you need to do, is make sure that everyone has the best policy and operating manual in place.
But that is not a legal requirement that he has that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
Mr. Wallace said I had my little cheat sheet that I asked for, is, I'm just gonna go over this real quick. What can go in an R2 opposed to an R1? These can go in an R2, but they cannot go in an R1, an adult daycare, a golf course, a government office, if we need to move your office up there, mayor, it could go in there in R2. Conditional use, a country club, parking lots, schools, a primary, secondary school, an ambulance station with a resident, it'd be running out of that house in R2. So I just wanted to bring those up, the things that possibly could go in an R2.
Okay. Comments, questions, seeing none on the motion?
On the motion, I was sorry, I zoned out. On the motion to adopt, Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Fester?
No.
Vouch?
No.
Hyde?
No.
Witcher?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Okay, motion failed, thank you very much. I want to say thank you to all those who made professional presentations. Uh, Councilor, Mayor, Steve, thank you very much. We're gonna take a one minute break.
Mayor, before we do that, I just want to ask a question of, of you, Mr. Flanagan, of you, same time, mayor. This is the first time something like this has come up since I've served on the city council. And I, at this point, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a good idea to look at our zoning ordinance concerning the future need for this type of home in Little Rock. And in our city, the population is getting older, I'm getting older, the need for, I've, I've, I've been asked several times at one in the city in Little Rock, do something for long-term care for the aged, for the elderly, for the nursing homes. So would it not be a good idea that if we, as a city council, and the zoning department, and a planning commission, sit down and take a look at what we might do to address this need that's gonna come?
Oh, actually, this is a novel idea, I was gonna address for you.
I'm saying, again, there's a, there's a family that lives down the street from me, on Mill Creek, on the other side of the street from baby, whose daughter lives with her elderly mother. And I know that they're receiving medically necessary Medicare, Medicare.
I think, I think.
Somebody has come into the home.
I think it's a good idea to address it, because this council has addressed, what is it, adult daycares? You know, we have something in place for adult daycares. So I think this is something that we do need to address.
I think that, that, tonight, the issue of rezoning was, was the question. It's not that we don't, we don't need to take a look at this. I think we need to, I think it would be totally mistaken, sadly mistaken, if we don't take a look at this down the road and do something for this, this going need, that's gonna address our city in the very near future.
We'll be happy to work with planning in the mayor's office to come up with alternatives for this council to consider.
Can we?
Yes, exactly.
We, we have, there's already another individual that is trying to come in and asking to do the same thing Mr. Butler's doing. So it's, it's out there, so we might as well address it and, and look at it and see if it's gonna, if we're gonna allow exceptions or not. Let's try our best to ease out if possible so we can get on, for the business. Okay, let's go. Thank you very much. If you'd like to get everyone to take their seats. We'll go back to the public comment signing sheet, and we have several to speak on the 013-117. 013-117 rules apply. Again, we have three minutes.
And, and the legislation's gonna be held, so.
Okay, information for those that are here, that legislation will be held tonight, but you are welcome to speak anyway. So if you would like to speak regarding 013-117, please come forward. Seeing none, uh, we have one more, we'll leave him in a minute. Arthur, Jimmy, what do you want to speak on, Arthur? You're done, okay? All right, I'm gonna cut close to the comment section officially, and let's go back to the legislation, Ms. Flanagan.
R13, 228, Mayor Smith.
Okay, that's why we're here tonight, um, please call.
Resolution adopting a budget for the 2014 fiscal year in the city of North Little Rock.
Good production.
Second. All right, we have amended the amended budget that everyone has copied of. Do I have a motion to amend?
Some of it.
Second.
Second.
A motion to amend, questions?
Mr. Taylor?
Only amended budget, uh, are we, Ms. Scott, are we, uh, only amended budget, are we balancing, are we talking about amended budget for 2014? That's what we talked about the last budget hearing, I mean, it's exactly, we didn't change anything since the last meeting.
That is correct. The only thing that's different in the exhibit, there's two, two things. The electric budget was pulled out from the version that was distributed the last time, and the parts revenue sheet was changed, and I believe Mr. Flanagan distributed that.
Okay, so in our amendment, we will reflect that. We don't have an electric budget, it's being voted on separately, and.
Part, part for the new, yes, change.
Correct.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to amend in a second. On the motion to amend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fester?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Our motion to adopt is amended. No, second, no, second. Motion to adopt is amended. No motion, no, second, second, question?
Uh, the sales tax revenue has changed on that either, I want to make sure.
Not from the version that was distributed as the attachment to the exhibit at our last council meeting.
With so many, I want to make sure that I've got the absolute correct one.
Part of the process.
And one thing I'd like to ask too, after this, could we receive a hard copy? I don't know if everybody wants a hard copy of the finished budget, the corrected budget.
Absolutely.
We have so many, I'll, I'll keep it to the year.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
We've gone through several iterations of this budget. We had two proposals to balance this without going into reserves. We drew over, almost three quarters of a million last year, over a million this year. Everybody keeps saying let's make hard decisions. But we're losing sales tax revenue to Conway, Cabot, BB, Greenbrier. We're spending millions of dollars on trolleys, submarines, bicycle trails. And what really caught my attention was, County, County County, there was an article in the news the other night, that they had six break-ins in one month. And it was newsworthy. And some of our neighborhoods, if only having six, six break-ins in one month would be newsworthy, because that's the least they've ever had. I think our priorities need to get back to basics. All the, all the fuck stuff that we couldn't cut this time is stuff we can't afford anymore. And the proof that we can't afford it is we're having to borrow almost $2 million in the last, not borrow, but take out of our reserves in the last two years, almost $2 million, and we've got bonds, millions and millions of dollars in bond issues coming up in the next couple of years that we're going to have to address. And I just think there's more that we could have done, to cut some of the stuff out here now, that takes us back to the basics of the responsibilities for our citizens.
Ms. Ross?
I was gonna say how much I appreciate you in the past, I voted against several budgets in the past because we had no input into the budget. We had no, you know, and we did have some input. I don't agree with everything in this budget. I'm not gonna vote against it because there's things in there that I don't agree with, because I'm not gonna just hold up the city and be like, Washington DC, basically, is what it is, some few things that I don't agree with. But I just want to say I appreciate the process. Next year, I look forward to having even more input into the budget. And like Mr. Pat said, we're gonna have some hard decisions this year. That was one of the things that, you know, that I agree to taking reserves this week. I know that you said that you're gonna look at that, so.
We, we'll have information for you soon, and the changes that we're gonna make, we need to make those by first quarter, maybe April. So it's gonna be on your mark, as I go. Jamie, first?
Over to you.
On the motion?
I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, I think that all of us, look at next year's budget when we start working on 2015 in a proactive manner. You know, revenues have gone down in the last 13 years since I've been serving on the city council, but our costs go up. We give our employees some sort of raise every year, we don't lay off employees, we try to give them some raise, we increase their fringe benefit package. The cost of gasoline has gone up practically. The cost of doing businesses for City of Little Rock goes up every year, but our revenues is on the slide or going sideways. So if we don't, we need to do something next year to be creative and generate some additional revenues for City of Little Rock. Because our employees are important to us, we don't want to lay any off. We want to try to give them a raise. If we don't raise our revenues, we're gonna have to, you know, not give them raises, not give them fringe benefits, not afford, not already laying off. So we need to start thinking about ways to create some additional revenues in the City of Little Rock that will benefit the City of Little Rock. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman, on the motion?
Go ahead, man, get your present. Um, and I spoke earlier in some of the meetings about how, I'm just cringing when we go into our reserves. However, I know that my mind is, you know, we gotta work together here to get something that we can work with and meet the needs of the citizens of the city. I am going to, you know, say that I look forward to that first quarter, and you provide us with information as I lay ahead, as we get ready to tackle 2015, because we're looking at some of the stuff we have coming up, some information that we've been providing, remind you, we've got some work to do. And we need to start early in the year.
Absolutely, and we've already started, actually. On the motion?
On the motion to adopt is amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fester?
No.
Hyde?
Yes.
Witcher? Motion carries. 013-110, Mayor Smith.
I talked to Superintendent Kelly Rogers, and they're closing on this January the 2nd because of whatever reasons, so I'm gonna hold that.
013-114, Alderman Taylor?
114.
You've got a hard charting.
We're holding that, thank you.
You're holding 013-110, so this will have to be refiled, right?
No, if you do not have a change or election year, you can carry it over. So we will carry that over, and we'll carry Alderman Taylor's legislation over also.
Thank you.
I asked that today, my manager didn't know that off the top of my head.
Don't tell anybody.
And Clerk Whitby is the one that told me that, but I immediately verified it.
Oh, are you kidding me?
Okay, new business, R13-230, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying government endorsement of advanced payment system, super dispened tax program, authorized by section 15 for 27060, consolidated incident act of 2003.
Good production, second.
Ms. Ross?
Is this on construction cost?
It is.
Okay.
I was not here, I'm saying it is very confidently, so.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fester?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor's property located at 3913 East Broadway, the city of North Little Rock, to Humms Hardware and Furniture Incorporated.
Good production.
Second. Don't need to explain that to anybody. Ms. Jackson, what question, Mr. Wallace, is this one of the properties we, I've slept since our last land development passport meeting, was this on there?
This is a property.
This, this is a warehouse, and it will be 2019 developed. And I try to hit a happy medium on price. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?